This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everybody. It is 6:09 PM on May 8th, 2024. Roll call.
Mayor Joe Shine.
Here.
Ms. Giligoff.
Here.
Jason Daley.
Jason has to be excused for work.
Did you say me? I'm here.
My person's.
Here.
Michael Ferguson.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. Wrong way. Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Marriage report. The Castle Court subdivision, the public hearing is scheduled at the May 16th Planning Committee hearing. The Alpine Court lift station removal project. The, this is incorrect. That was presumptuous, I think. We're still waiting on the property owners to get back to us regarding that request, if they would be interested in pursuing a utility easement for the new sewer line through their property. May Day and Warden Park grand opening, so hopefully everyone was out there. I think I saw most of these folks there. It rained, but people hung around anyway, so it was pretty great. So it was a great.
It was a good day.
Yeah, it was a good day, and people hung around for the grand opening, and they were down at the pavilion. Anyway, it was just a really good event, so thank you to everyone that helped out with that, the May Day Committee especially.
Yes.
And then, of course, to support the Lions Club, the circus is coming to town again. At the end of May here, May 30th, so you can get your tickets now. A lot of that benefits the Lions Club so that they can do their different food baskets they do for the needy families all year long. Council reports. Any members of the council have anything to report? No? All right, agenda approval.
A motion that we approve the agenda.
A motion by Mr. Ferguson to approve the agenda. Do we have a second? Second one, Mr. Hall. Discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for tonight's meeting.
It would be last, last meeting, Mike.
Tonight hasn't happened yet. We're live. We're making, we're making tonight happen.
Did I say minutes or agenda?
Minutes.
It's, yeah, we're looking for a motion for the minutes for April 24th.
Oh, I make a motion that we approve the minutes for meeting on April 24th.
We have a meeting for Mr. Parsons to approve the minutes from April 24th. We have a second?
So.
Second of Mr. Hall. Any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve the amended end of April 2024 vouchers for $8,556.44, 1st of May, 2024, $39,865.36.
A motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the vouchers as written. Do we have a second?
Seconds.
All right, second one, Mr. Ferguson. He's too quick. Any discussion? All right, hearing done. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Special reports, those kind of shares.
More activity for April 2024. Sis in contact was 288, traffic stops were 10, infractions were two, misdemeanor and criminal citations were one. There were no on-shift calls for the month and 18 off-shift calls resulting in one custodial arrest and two criminal citations.
And this includes the very, the very public shooting that was going on down on Main Street?
Right, he was one of, he was the one custodian who was taking them to custody at that time. And the other two were, where they were receiving a criminal citation and a sentence.
All right, thank you. Any questions from Mr. Ruben? Thank you. Yeah, I think I heard that there was, when that incident happened down on Main Street, there was no shortage of of officers that showed up to that, that showed up to that event, so.
Yeah, they, they get, all the different departments.
Yeah, so that was, that was a great, a great thing. Thank you. Public comment. Any members of the public have any comment tonight? Went online or in the audience? Sir Joe Notch is here.
I, I have a question.
Well, Bob, I've got a, in, in the house, a public comment first from Mr. Joe Notch.
The Chamber of Commerce wants tomorrow at 11:00, Country Financial, right behind the grocery store in Toledo. The other one's got its place on the 15th at 11:00, and the monthly luncheon is on the 16th at Papa Bear's West of noon.
All right, thank you for those updates from the South County Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Goff, you had a public comment?
Yes, I want to know why the receivership, water receivership, receivership was an oddly Jim thing.
I don't have anything about the water system on the agenda this week because there hasn't been any, anything to update or to discuss at this time.
Aren't we supposed to be applying for ownership? Are we supposed to be moving planner to go forward?
Right, yeah, there's the Water System Action Plan that needs to get written. We've talked about, we've talked to the Department of Health already about that, and they're in supportive of helping the city if they can. So there's been things that have been done so far, but it's still, still pending. Any other public comment? Okay. Moving on to city business. Counsel will discuss the six-year transportation improvement plan. So this is a requirement, this is part of the State Growth Management Act. As a city that operates under the GMA, this is an annual requirement to have a six-year transportation improvement plan. It has to get updated every year, and it gets filed with the state by July 1st, keeps us in compliance. Some cities have an entire book that is their transportation improvement plan. Ours tends to be a sheet of paper, and it has all of our, most of our roads on it. So I think there's two sheets. Oh, yeah, so this has got a, the sheet that you have has got a front and a back. So on the front, the shorter one was our transportation improvement plan from last year. You can see that we did get some things done or have some things planned already that should be taken care of. So we did get the A Street from 8th to 9th paved last year, and the E Street from 10th to Park, that's a part of the the Henderson subdivision, part of their requirements would be to do A. One will get done as well. So that was last year. On the other, on the other side of the page is our submiddle that we put together for this coming year. So this includes quite a few more streets. It also includes more realistic estimates. We use the cost for A Street to base these, these estimated costs on. So just because we have it in the plan doesn't mean we have to execute this plan. It doesn't mean we have to follow this plan. We just have to have a plan. And so at the top of the list, so I did put the widening of that road. I know counsel has talked a lot about, about that road and about how narrow it is, and their, their, their want for that. I have a, I had a meeting last year with Lewis County about their water line improvement project that's going to be going through there. When they do that, there's going to be a contractor that has to repair the road. I have some conversations with that contractor as soon as they go out, as soon as they select them, and see if we can piggyback some work onto that and try to get 10th Street widened during that project. So that's at the top of the list, and then, of course, a variety of other roads that need work. So if counsel has any, any, any input, we can change it. Otherwise, what we'll do is we'll have a public hearing about this and get it submitted off to the state. Any comments from counsel about this? Questions?
I don't see the I see the school crossing sign, but what about the Jake Brake or Engine Brake sign? Does that need to be on this?
It doesn't need to be on this, no.
That would be a highway thing, correct, Mayor?
Right, yeah, those are just signs that we can order and then place along 506. Any other suggestions from counsel on this? Okay, once there are no other comments from counsel, then we'll probably, you'll see this again at the, at a public hearing that we'll schedule for June. And then counsel can officially adopt it after the public hearing, and then we'll get it sent off. All right, moving on to item number two, counsel to discuss 4th of July, city-sponsored event. So the 4th of July is coming up. It's, can't believe it's less than two months away already. So the council did budget for this event again, and I just wanted to make sure that counsel was still on board with following through with this city-sponsored event. The, the pyrotechnic gentleman that's going to be doing it is, it's a different gentleman this year. Still part of the same group, and they're still going to use Jake's fireworks for this event. And so you actually, you've probably seen that the fireworks were in the vouchers through the, Lisa, was the fireworks that were part of the vouchers that were already approved, weren't they? So, yeah, so they, they were already approved in the vouchers, so no one, no one said that they weren't going to approve the vouchers for the fireworks, so. Any other input from the council? We're just going to plan to stay within budget that, that was budgeted for this event unless counsel has some other thoughts. Heard some rustling from Mr. Ferguson.
Well, we always return in. I, I was, I was trying to decide what I was going to say and how I was going to say it, but, yeah, I, I think it's great. I think that having someone else in charge of it this year, without going into detail, I think it'd be better. And, and I fully support it. It's a great community event, brings everyone together, and I'm 100% behind that every time, all the time.
Great. The lead technician on this is Mr. Clay Camp. Some folks here in the City Hall have seen his work before, and, and they vouch for his work. He's done some work down in Silver Lake and, and things like that, and so he's, he's got, he's got good, good credentials, and so I think we're, we're in good hands.
Beautiful.
Okay, so there'll probably be a few other things coming up in the, in the coming weeks with, you know, the city will order or get the, the porta potties ordered and the anything else. So thank you, counsel, for supporting this, this event. All right, lastly, on the business, counsel to discuss increases to the annual 911 dispatch fees. So I think some of you got that information a couple of weeks, a few weeks back from City Hall about that, about the dispatch fees for 911 going up 350% for the city of Vader, and the sheet that we had gotten from county didn't really explain why. And so we reached out to the county manager, who then reached out to, I believe it was the director of 911, and they did send a letter to kind of explain what happened. Did counsel get that letter?
I have not seen it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so we'll make sure you get it, but here's the gist of it. So they hadn't reevaluated the way 911, 911 fees get split up between the different municipalities in quite some time. And so there is a voting body that is composed of various fire districts and police departments that did meet on this, and they did vote and approve this. And so the way it works is that 911 has a budget, and the fire stations have to pay the fire districts pay, they were paying 75% of the budget, and now they're paying 70%. And so the fire, the fire districts got a savings of 5%, and that 5% needed to be made up by the cities. So that's one reason why the cities needed to pay more for the 911. But they went a step further, and they adjusted the way how to explain this, the way cities are weighted, are weighted in the amount that they have to pay. So originally, it was, population was a very the higher your population, the more that you had to pay for 911 services. So obviously, Centralia would have to pay a lot more than Vader because of population. They changed that. So population is only 10% of the, the factor they consider in this. So really, it's, it's, that's not even not even a part of, of the, of the weighting anymore. What, the two things that hold the most weight in their decision is how many police officers you have. That's 45% of the cost, and the number of calls for service that your area has. And so Vader has more calls for service than our other similarly sized cities, which means we have to pay more than other cities. And there are only about 100, a little over 100 law enforcement officers in the entire county. If you take Lewis County Sheriff's Department and all of the cities and add them all up, there's only about 100. Small cities that don't have a police department were, they gave everyone a one as an officer in the, in the factoring. And so Vader has one officer, which out of 100 means we are 1% of the total cost for the number of officers in the county. And so that's 45% of it is, is officers, 45% is calls for service, and the other 10% is population. So because they restructured the way they, they, they calculate fees, and the fact that cities had to pay 5% more anyway, Vader was hit pretty hard with it. So that's why our fees went from 3,000 to 13,000 a year. You know, this, um yeah, Napavine was also hit pretty hard as well. So.
Is this a state-operated?
No, this is.
This is state-operated.
This is county. So this is, this money goes to Lewis County 911 dispatch. So this is, their budget is supported by the Lewis County agencies that use them, the fire departments, the police departments. That's where the funding comes from.
Wow, so like, they came in and gave us like a little, gave us a little break on the contract, like, wasn't quite as much, and then like 911 dispatch kind of comes in and cleans up, makes up the rest of the budget.
I don't, I don't know. I don't, I don't know if the two are linked together. I don't, I don't think, when we had the Sheriff's Department contract, that was that was in the, in the factoring. I mean, I think, I don't have the numbers here, but Lewis County went up too. Yeah, Lewis County had, Lewis County Department had to pay, had to pay more as well this year, so 30% more.
At least we're in a position where we can afford it, I guess.
Yeah, it's not gonna, it's not gonna, you know, tear us up the extra $10,000 or so, but, you know, we certainly didn't budget for it. That's certainly a, a huge increase for, for us. You know, we didn't have any warning about it. I'm sure they did, I'm sure, I'm sure the agency, just like us, they did their public hearings and notices and all that, but you know, they, they've, they've said that they, they see that that was kind of a miss on their end to inform the different cities that it was going to be more, and that they'll do better in the future, but we're not, we're not the only one. I mean, Napavine, you know, got hit with extra $60,000 because they have, they have five or six police officers now. And so, you know, since the police officers are weighted so much in their population, even though they're a relatively small city with a bigger budget, you know, they got hit with a, with a, with a big increase as well. You know, Toledo and Munlock also got hit with pretty big increases, or a little bit more, again, because our, our call volume is a little higher than other places, so. So I don't know what to say other than it's just the way it is, but that's, that's kind of the way it is. And still, for 13,000 a year, I think, you know, from the city of Vader, I think it's probably money well spent to keep the 911 dispatch going, but that's what happened. And we'll make sure that you guys get that official letter that you can read through it. But they changed the formula and all the cities paid more. That's the, that's what happened.
There's a sheet in the back of the packet too that has the methodology, you can kind of look it up.
Okay. Yeah, so there's some information in your packet about it, and make sure you get that email too. Any other questions on that, or did I, I ramble enough about it?
I feel like you filled me in. I, I appreciate your efforts in explaining it, Joe.
Correct. Mr. Notch, you have a question about it?
Yes, so can they put in new towers and new radios and systems in 911?
I know there are some efforts to improve the infrastructure, yeah.
So this increase is not included in that?
This is, this is the annual budget to fund their operations.
About, aren't they doing a 911 also, you know?
I don't know much about that. I know they've talked about going to a, a regional one or even joining the Lewis, or excuse me, the Thurston County co-op for call center. I know there was some price analysis that they did to see if it would be cost-effective if Lewis County went with the, with the regional call center. I know that they've been looking at it, but I don't know the results of it. There's just someone on the other side of the phone. That's what I, that's what I know right now. Any other questions about this? Okay, elected official comments. Any members of the council have any comments at the end of the meeting here?
I'd like to thank Mr. Parsons for lending his sounding equipment to the May Day Committee for the May Day Parade. It was really great having that and made it, made it really fun.
Somebody texted me earlier and said if I could make mention, which I didn't know about this, but I'm glad that this person let me know that David and Ivan I guess Ivan is gone and Dave is in hospice. And it would be nice to, for the city to mention their contributions to the city. Dave put that history book together, was on city council. The downtown revitalization plan was started by him. Street. So just wanted to keep him in our prayers and, and make sure that they're remembered.
Thank you, yeah. They, they, they're, I see their, that was right, it was before my time, but I see their names on a lot of the, a lot of the the community-sponsored improvements around the city from, from the early 2000s. So they were definitely a big part of the city.
Dave and Ivan Gamel?
Dave and Ivan, they live at the, in the mansion at the end of 9th Street, or they live there.
D Street.
What was it? Oh, D Street, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, they live in the historical Ben, Ben Olson House, it's on the National River Street.
Gotcha.
Well, I'd like to point out, and the people online can't see it, but the big map of the city of Vader on the wall over here, it was, it was requested that instead of having the line drawing, that we get a satellite aerial view of the city. So I put it up a few minutes ago.
You provided that, Joe.
See, there, see, there it is on the wall right there. You can, you can see it.
I can't. I'll see it, I'll see it someday next time.
Anyway, so, anyway. It's, it's, so, anyway, so that's there for. It's, it's, so, anyway, so that's there for, for people's enjoyment, so. All right, well, if there's any other, if there's any other elected official comments, this meeting is adjourned at 6:38 PM.